Call me at one on Saturday, January 12th, 2013. Nine a.m., make the town office. For today's meeting, just clear fourteen budget work session. We'll be getting an update from the town manager and then we'll be going to fire budget, police department, and anything else as I go. I'll take a quick announcement, I'm gonna have to leave today at eleven thirty for another appointment I had at twelve. You may not finish, we do have one more session after this, next Saturday. From the correspondence, I've seen you all sending the packets for the agencies that Michelle passed out last week. I didn't see any response or anybody wanted to talk to anybody that submitted a packet. Is anyone decided they do want to see someone? Okay, so then, we've got the libraries, who else do we have Stuart?
That's it.
Just the libraries to do with the agencies that are coming forward on this thing. So, there's some changes that were passed out today that we'll be working off and Stuart, I'll just have your staff, you know, keep us on whatever sheet paper we should be in, whatever place. Stuart, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, what we handed out this morning is a, what's called revision C. The changes that were made in the budget and we gave you the two pages, pages nine and ten, and the recreation budget that were changed. There were three things that we were able to do. We eliminated four of the imperials. State law now provides, the state shall pay to that cost for all indigent burials, which relieves us of that responsibility. We eliminated the pool vac and will pay for that out of the bond money, we do have sufficient funds to do that. And we financed the truck in the recreation department, about seventy-seven hundred a year over four years, let's say we cut down twenty-one thousand, three hundred dollars. For combined savings of twenty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars. We also gave you page one, which showed the net impact on the revenues, which dropped slightly. And then pages nine and ten were the recreation center budgets. I also handed out to you the salaries.
Stuart, before you get out of that, Stuart, then what does the one twenty-five, seven hundred represent?
That is the net decrease to be raised by taxes from the efforts that we've made so far.
Okay.
So, those are the cuts that we've made.
So, that's town Y?
That's, uh, yes.
Just not what you've, not these here, just that's...
No, no, it's all, it's what you see here. Revision A and B eliminated a hundred thousand from highway budget.
Okay.
And then we just eliminated twenty-five, seven from the general fund budget.
Okay, before we get on the next one Stuart, anybody have any questions on what Stuart just said?
Was it twenty, some of that was a shift, like we shifted, and I know it's a small amount, but we put it into the bond vacuum, so, some of those things, okay.
Yeah, that went into the bond monies. As I said, I also handed out the comparative salaries to the manager, the clerk, and the treasurer. I don't know whether we get to that today, but if we did this week or next, we'll have to deal with it.
So, how long are we financing the truck for, like three or five years?
The pickup truck?
Yeah.
Four years.
Four years.
Okay, well at least the number's going in the right direction, so let's move on.
Well, you have, the other change that we didn't make, I should probably tell you this, is RJ carefully looked at the equipment purchases that we had laid out, including the skid steer. The original skid steer cost was eighteen-two ninety-five, there was a trade value in there which brought it down to the ninety-eight hundred dollars that you saw in the capital plan.
Just a comment on that, can you go through the capital plan from the select board then and make sure we have actual acquisition costs and that acquisition cost, that's a fairly important piece of information.
Yes, it is, I agree.
Jason, forgive my stupidity, why, why is that so?
Well, when a select board's looking at a proposal that says we want to spend fifty thousand dollars on something to replace it for ninety-eight, fifty, I think we ought to know that the original cost was closer to twenty thousand, not ten thousand.
Yeah.
It stood out as a glaring thing, Joe, that we're going up over five hundred percent for a place that's been used.
Okay, I got it. So, that's because we did what, we didn't include in there?
Trade.
And include trade.
Okay, got it.
And that, that was done in the very original development of the plan, and so that, that is something we were gonna go through carefully and try to make sure that we get all of those numbers taken. The, he did take a look, I'm speaking for RJ here, that at the skid steer, we really don't dare reduce it, even if you, even if the bid comes in around forty-five, which is potential, by the time we get a bid, we're not gonna see some increases, so we did make a change there, and are recommending a change there. The trucks are already, RJ believes after talking with folks in the industry, are already in at a value that should hold until they are bid and received. So, we didn't make any change in that, like us to, you know, I'll give a few folks to determine.
Okay, before we get on, let's just wrap up the highway from select board, what are our concerns about the highway budget we discussed last week and see what the streets have to say?
I'd like to bring up the project on Safford Street that's been nixed. Stu and I talked about this thirty years ago when I was working on the summers for the town on the high town highway crew. Safford Street looks, looked pretty much the way it looks now. Mr. Ayers came to me shortly after he got elected with concerns about busted up areas of Safford Street, and his concerns that somebody was gonna get hurt. And I went over there with RJ and Dan Monks to look at it, and it was clear that it was in bad repair. But when I went in there by myself, I happened to see a young mother pushing a carriage and texting it simultaneously, and as she got close to the bridge, she hit a piece of cement and almost dumped the baby out. Stu and I talked about what the increase in the cost to the budget would be, which is, how much Stuart?
So, well...
To take care of that area of Safford Street?
Well, there's a one fifteen element for Safford and Bradford that's on the whole pile, but we have an opportunity to put that back.
Actually, Safford and Bradford combined will cost sixty-four thousand, seven twenty, and then we cut a, one highway project at forty-five, forty-nine.
But the increase to the budget would be per taxpayer?
You and I talked. Oh, it'd be about a penny and a half on the tax rate.
So, that's to put Bradford and Safford back on?
If you put, if you put all of the projects back in the budget, it was penny and a half. If you just put the two sidewalk projects back in, sixty-four thousand, about two-thirds of a penny, ninety thousand dollars approximately, just pending in the highway fund.
Or we would presumably do them in the next fiscal year.
We could do that, yes.
There's, there's probably fifty streets and sidewalks in bunches in these weird places, but obviously we can only do so much in a given year.
I understand that, but Mr. Ayers, this is a, some of the concern that he's had for several years.
I understand that.
He's mentioned to current and former select board members, and, you know, no favoritism should be shown for him. However, he's a taxpayer, multi-generational taxpayer, and these boys' concerns, I think, need to be addressed.
Okay, why don't we write this down as a concern, this is something, when we finish the whole process, we'll take these areas, we're listing these concerns, and we'll go one by one, and we see the total impact of the budget on taxpayers. And I'll hold my thoughts, I won't ask right now, we'll do this at the same time, and the highway, whether or not we want to do what we've done in the past years, is that the board is on the second article, whether or not they want to put more, and we'll just hold that off, and have that discussion after we go through both the process.
Can we look at the, the cost of that skid steer, when we had this discussion too?
Yep.
And into the highway?
And texting while walking should be a concern too.
Okay, so that's, that's good, we've got it, and the concerns there, we'll go ahead and handle the process. Okay Stuart?
Okay, that brings us really to the fire department budget, and we sent out to you a description of the need from Chief Crawford. We also talked with Municipal Leasing Corp., which is a grand aisle based company that handles these large municipal leases. They've given us a proposal. This proposal is based on, in two ways, one, using only the sale price of the two vehicles to bring the bid down to four twenty-nine, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand. The second would be committing the entire reserve that we have on hand to bring the purchase price down to two hundred eighty-nine thousand. We both, so that gives you the range, and they're both included in there. The proposals give you a ten-year, a twelve-year, and a fifteen-year lease figure. They range from a low of twenty-five thousand to a high of forty-eight thousand, I believe, depending on how you, what is your purchase price, and how you commit whatever amount of reserve to the, to the purchase. The beauty, there is a beauty in all of this, by setting this up as a lease payment in arrears, the first payment is not due until after the acceptance of the vehicle, which would push the actual impact of this into FY 2015. So, if the board decides to move forward with this, there's a bid process, there's a selection process, there's a process where they build the truck, and ultimately, nine months, ten months from now, the truck should be ready for delivery, and I may be accelerating that, depending on where we are, the actual payment won't come until 2015.
For some reason, I thought, remember that one of the vehicles, one of them we looked at a few weeks ago, is that not, did you read that wrong?
That was a, it's a demonstrator that came down, that was the philosophy of the type of truck that we were looking at.
Right. Chief, you've taken the select board through the vehicles at the firehouse, and we've seen your presentation, but, you know, we're on camera for, for the public to see, so why don't you give us a brief summary as far as why you and Paulie had in the need to take this action?
The, the equipment that we've had is, you know, is getting older in years. We, a year, year and a half ago, approached to try to buy a new truck then. The select board then asked us to look at, you know, taxpayer money and some kind of, you know, different avenues we've since looked at in the fire department, and the way that the, you know, the volunteers are, we're asking for more training, and we're getting less volunteers in the time and stuff in the economy, so we've decided to eliminate two trucks and get one rescue pumper. The unique, I guess it's pretty unique across the country, I've talked to four or five manufacturers, and it's a, a new trend, I guess, that you see with the economy the way it is, that people are looking to combine more stuff on one truck to have less, with less volunteers. So, we looked at that and, you know, we came up with the rescue pumper idea. While it's a, it's a major expense for the town, I believe that it's, it's gonna be a tremendous asset. It'll be a truck that responds, probably the first new out truck, I recall, and it will, it'll have just about everything we need to get started on any kind of situation with the fire department, whether it's a car accident, or a structural fire, or a hazmat.
Did you do analysis, maintenance Y, it's cost of maintenance, future maintenance cost?
We did, it's listed in your note we put here.
Why don't you give me that, please?
The two trucks that we were talking about, over the last couple years, have been around the, you know, twenty thousand dollars of maintenance. As they get older, we're looking at more maintenance, we're looking at, you know, there's no more TMI in the vehicle, and, you know, the just cause of something going wrong as they get older is, you know, significant, and the trucking industry is predominant, you know, it's a working piece of equipment, and, you know, when you get to that age, it gets up there in price. The new truck will have primarily from bumper to bumper, a full five-year warranty, which would save us for the first five years. The, I think the unique savings for the town would be in years, five, from five years older to, for the twenty years what we expect this truck to be, you know, we'd be looking at half the maintenance while we only go two trucks. Whether it's repairs or, you know, major component there. I think that's where we look at to save the taxpayer monies in the, in the long run, is as these trucks get into the older ages, you know, we, instead of maintaining the two of them, we'd be one.
Paul, you wanna add anything to this?
I have to tell you that I've been meeting with Steve and Jeff right from the start on all of this, and I support the purchase of the rescue pumper truck. We, again, as Steve said, we approached the select board about a year and a half ago, took a look at what we currently had, understood the financial times at the time, and we, the fire department did back off. So, at this point, what we did was we, we took a look at replacing not just the one truck that we wanted to a year and a half ago, but now replacing two trucks, as Steve said, putting all that equipment on one truck, having that truck roll out first, and have all the equipment that we need to respond to an incident. As Steve said, our volunteers seem to be dwindling, people aren't able to keep up with the training, and things of that nature, people are not allowed to leave work like they were twenty years ago. So, having people trained on this one truck and trained with the equipment that will be on this truck will certainly be beneficial to our, our community, because again, the truck will be ready, with all the equipment, we'll be able to roll out. We did take a look at the warranty, because that was a concern of mine financially, to see where this would be, and it is, as Steve said, a bumper to bumper warranty for the first five years, so we would be saving maintenance there. We have been putting a lot of money into truck nine-three-six, and we do need to keep up with the NFPA standards. I think that that truck is gonna cost us more money as we, as we hold on to it, so I do support the purchase of this. Stuart and I did have some conversations about this not affecting the budget until fiscal year 2015, which was positive, but at the same time, we still need to think about that, because we don't know what the future is gonna hold, so, you know, I don't wanna shadow that, but at the same time, I would also ask, Steve, Jeff and I have had conversations about please not depleting the reserve account down to zero, because several years from now, we will be looking at replacing the ladder truck to the tune of probably nine hundred thousand dollars, somewhere in there. So, I would ask that you, that we take a look at all of the options presented by Stuart, and that we not completely deplete that reserve account.
Okay, minus the maintenance cost of the vehicles we have right now, anticipated, that you've given us, now, do I recall you telling us when we were at firehouse that there are some, there are some standards changed where we would have to purchase additional equipment this year, if we just maintain the trucks we have, or did I read that wrong?
Not in the standards, because why I'm doing the standard, NFPA standard is pretty much when you buy a truck, you grandfathered into it.
Okay.
But to stay up for the standards going forward, like the NFPA standards is every seven years, we replace the tires on the trucks where we need it. NFPA says that that's the average lifespan of a tire that you could create up in there. And then, as we go forward with the other equipment outside loose equipment, you know, they, as we buy them, they come up through with the NFPA standard. So, the trucks themselves are grandfathered, but there's standards out there on the new truck, you know, that are far more safety oriented, rollover protection, you have electrical safety device, they have a digital data recorder box now, so that if the truck does crash or something, we can have that pulled.
Investigation.
Yeah, that's part of it, you know, all that stuff, there's a shoveling, a striking on the back, let's see if you can see it, stuff like that.
Select board members, Jason?
What, a couple of questions for you, Steve. What is the, you talked about expected maintenance over the next five years where we'd be under a bumper to bumper warranty. What is your expected value for the cost of that maintenance over the next five years?
Just the standard, just the standard on these two trucks?
Right, just if you can isolate it to those two trucks, yeah.
Primarily, you would have a heavy, heavy chassis service, which would be roughly a thousand dollars per truck, and then a pump test, which is another seven hundred dollars.
Is that per year?
That's per year.
Okay.
And then another pump service, which is another four hundred and fifty dollars per year. And predominantly, like what, like certain, tell you with the fire department, everything goes up just about every year, three to four percent.
So, even if we, let me restate what you said, even if we were conservative on what you just said, a thousand plus seven hundred plus four fifty is twenty-one fifty, if you call that two thousand per truck, that'd be four thousand dollars per year, per truck.
And it would indicate a three thousand per set of tires?
And then, forget tires.
Yeah, you have all of them.
Because they buy tires on any truck that we've got eventually, but...
Right, exactly.
Well, that, okay, that being said, is there anything in the repair and maintenance budget for the machinery, I mean machinery and equipment budget, but the small tools, equipment purchase and repair and maintenance budget then, if we're taking these costs out of, at least next year, because we're contemplating buying new trucks, shouldn't we be able to correspondingly reduce the repair costs on the trucks that we won't have?
I would, I would strongly oppose at this point, I'll tell you why, we are currently in fiscal year 2014, where we are now, we're only four thousand dollars over budget in fire truck maintenance and repair. I would ask that we take a look at where we land at the end of this year, if this truck is not gonna be practiced financially until fiscal year 2015, I would ask that we take a look at it next year. We've had a, we've had quite a bit of maintenance done, we have huge expense with the ladder truck, and again, we're currently four thousand dollars over budget, and we still need to get to July. A lot of our major service has been done, this isn't, it's not like we can just go over to Lori or, or whatever, and who's involved, I mean, these people come up from the state of Connecticut, that's who we've been using, they test our pumps, they do all sorts of things, and I would be opposed to removing anything right now, Jason, from fiscal year 2014, until we realize the full impact.
Okay, well, next question is, Stu, on the memorandum you sent out, I was curious what your recommendation was, is the ultimate responsibility for the budget?
Well, I tend, given the range of costs, I think if we could, if we could commit sufficient reserve to bring that cost in the thirty to thirty-five thousand dollar range, that would probably be something that would not impact the budget too dramatically going forward, and there...
How much would that be in terms of reserves?
I really, I would guess they would probably be committing at least half the reserve.
Sure, we lost, you know, looking at the balance here.
Jason, what, can I just ask you a quick question, what page were you looking at where you were seeing the maintenance cost in the budget for the trucks over the...
Looking at page sixteen of seventeen, about four fifths of the way down into particular line now.
Revision B?
Revision, I'm using revision B.
Okay.
It's forty-five, seventy, six eighty, if you have the numbers.
Actually, I was looking at forty-five, eighty, six eighty, for equipment.
In that repair and maintenance?
Oh, sorry, I gave you the wrong one, that's no, forty-five, eighty, six eighty, sorry.
Sixteen, and that, and that repair and maintenance line is, does include vehicles, because I know, like I see in the highway, the vehicles are broken up differently, so are, is this repair and maintenance for?
Of the vehicles.
Of the vehicles, okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Jason.
I think Stu and we're just trying to look at what the fire fund reserve balance was, which if I'm looking at that is a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, if I'm looking at it correctly.
Right, and there's another thirty thousand in this year's budget that could also be committed.
So, out of a hundred and seventy, are you recommending eighty-five thousand be committed?
I would think that that would bring you into that thirty to thirty-five thousand dollar range.
Joe, I guess my question to the board would be, would it make sense to get that analysis right for next week's meeting and have that in it, so we know what the cost would be, what the, what the lease will be, and what the reserves would be?
Yeah, 'cause that was one of my concerns, been looking at the differences, I, I should only see a difference in maybe a payment over the whole course of the loan between one scenario of cleaning out the reserve, and one scenario of not using it.
Okay, well, we'll get Stuart to announce that when we talk, did you have any hand up, did you have a question? Brady, anything else?
Yeah, one question, I'd, is, and I don't know if you have any information now, just as far as response and manning and whatnot, kind of practical, day-to-day stuff on this truck, and I can envision a lot of reasons why this would be a good idea for the town. I've seen them used in other towns, now that, you know, ever since the demonstration, I'm driving around, I see in Pittsfield, I've seen one in Westfield, Massachusetts, actually saw it respond to the late night alarm across the street from where I was staying. What kind of real-life improvements to service are, are we seeing, you know, with these trucks around, defensively?
Basically, it's the same, it's the same type of scenario, is, you know, when the truck pulls up, you can have the equipment, no matter what the, what the call is, you'd have the equipment needed to start. Prime example, car crash, probably local car crash, where, you know, they called, said it was a car crash, they sent the crash truck first, has no pump capabilities, got there, the car was on fire. Now, with this apparatus, you'd be able to take care of both of that, you know, and it's sad to say, but if you pull up and you have the wrong equipment, you, you stay in there for what seems forever. I mean, you only admit, admit it or two, but you can get the job started and, and get it done, so...
So, the difference between arrival time and response time for...
Yeah, in the, in the case of, you know, if you get a, you know, primarily if we get a call, like a utility call now, where, you know, I think, I got smoke in my basement, you know, and is it a malfunction of a furnace, that we send the truck first with the gas meters, or we get there and it's something that's on fire, you know, the house is burning up and it went from the attic to the basement, you know, that makes a big difference.
How many calls are we seeing on a daily average?
We have, we have responded to two-hundred-and-forty-seven calls this year alone, in 2012, sorry. And with that, you know, right around, we've done about seventy-eight hundred man-hours between training and fire response.
And that would be the first response vehicle in most cases?
Yeah, truck would go out for every call.
That's all, thanks. Chris, I'll get you in a chair.
No, not right now.
Here, Sharon?
Just because this is a specialized vehicle, so shall we call it, just because it's a little bit different than the rest of the fleet that we have, and you said there's a five-year bumper to bumper, but after that five years, because of the truck, the type of truck it is, is the maintenance gonna be more, do you think, I mean, could it be more than what we regularly do on the...
It would not be any more than, than the, the two trucks we have now, the, basically the, the rescue truck is a heavy-duty chassis service, and then we would just, you would eliminate that heavy-duty chassis service from that truck, you know, in the near, you know, after the five years or whatever. The, but the, the payments are the preventative maintenance on the vehicle would be the same.
Any else here?
No.
Go ahead, Jim.
When we looked at the, the new truck, the prospective new truck, you and I were talking about the failure rate with the old truck, because it had galvanized steel, and this one is gonna have stainless steel. Can you elaborate on that a little bit, and why that's a good thing?
Well, the industry, predominantly, when, when you build a truck, you know, the trucks that we built were on a ten-year spec, on a, what they call a commercial chassis, which is international chassis, and the trucks were aluminum, and then the piping in it was galvanized steel, or just plain steel in some of the cases. What we find is in, at, at the age of the truck now, at ten years or whatever, you find that the steel starts to fail, and we start getting into new pumping, or new piping in the pump, and the new truck would be a stainless steel truck on a custom chassis, which would give it the longevity of the twenty-year spec that we've proposed to Stuart, that this truck will last twenty years, and then it also, all the piping inside would be stainless steel, and the stainless steel is a much more rugged piping, more corrosion-resistant, more, and there'll go rust, stainless.
Okay, two great things. I think what I heard you say is that, once we decide on this particular vehicle that we've been working with basically almost two years, and we're gonna do, the next fire truck, we have, we about, is it the ladder, is the ladder truck?
That's correct.
And you're anticipating, what year will we have to address the lifespan of that?
Truck is up. In June of 2017, so more than likely in fiscal year 2018.
Okay, and the other question is, in past budget meetings, you talked about upgrades of other equipment that there have been brands out there, I haven't heard any, have you seen any, I mean, we did communication about last year, we had this money in, or whatever, but you see anything there where, I didn't see anything presented, where there's something else that the department may want, or the, the industry, being the fire industry says, you know, there's grants out here to get this estate, is there anything out there looming that you think you're gonna, you asked for, you chose not to ask for this year, you're going through the truck into this process?
Well, obviously, you know, as we go forward, you know, put the truck into the budget, you know, we try to reserve as much as we can, keep it to a bare minimum. In the future, there is, you know, more budgets, more budgetary things that we'll need, we're trying to get as much as we can on this truck, you know, that we wouldn't need in the future budget, which, you know, should save us some significant savings. And then we also do, we, we check for grants, and we apply for probably at least twelve grants a year, I would say, and, you know, if we get one out of the twelve, you know, this day and age, we're pretty fortunate, it's, it's a tough, a lot tougher than it was at nine eleven.
Great, so what we're looking at is, we've heard the briefing on the truck, that's the decision we have to make on the fire, we're gonna hold off until Stuart comes back to us and tells us the impact on reserve fund, am I correct in that?
One more question. Just speaking of equipment and whatnot, when we're talking about a truck, this is now, we got a pumper on it, so are we talking about equipping with new... So are we talking about equipping with new hoses, using our existing hoses, tools, et cetera like that? Is there anything in this package that we're replacing in our equipment?
In this truck, we've tried to put in provisions for some new air packs that we would need, you know, in the future budgets and some, also some hoses that we would need. We have, predominantly we've switched to five-inch supply line hoses. And we have one truck left with four-inch. What we would do is if this new truck goes through, we would try to put a provision in there for the five-inch hoses on that truck. And then the truck that has four-inch hoses now, we would load with the truck that we're selling and sell it that way.
So we're not going to buy a new truck and put the ten-year-old hoses on it?
Exactly.
Justin? Just one question for Stuart. I just want to make sure, and I know you're going to get the information and bring it back to us, but just explain that there's the numbers again in the memorandum that you sent us out. I'm just looking at the cover sheet from July eighth, with the difference of two hundred eighty-nine thousand and then you got four hundred and twenty-nine from the, just, I want to make sure I understand what you're trying to come up with.
Initially, if you, if you commit the, it's a hundred and ten thousand that we would hope to gain from the sale of the two vehicles.
Okay.
That takes the five hundred and sixty thousand dollar price down to four twenty-nine.
Okay. All right, Stu, if I can just comment, we've got to hope, the, the page two of the memorandum says we hope to get a hundred and thirty-one thousand.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry.
Okay, I just, you know, before twenty thousand disappeared, I wanted to make sure.
That was my trip. That was my trip. Yeah, we got the right number. Yes. Anyway, that brings the purchase price down to four twenty-nine. That commits only the, the sale price of the two vehicles. If you then take the current equipment reserve, and Jason has already read that off, it's one forty-one thirty, and you commit the entire reserve to the purchase price, it would bring it down to two hundred and eighty-eight, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. If in fact, you took the FY thirteen reserve, which is another thirty thousand, and committed that, you would get to a low of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars.
Do we have to finance or?
That we would have to finance. And, and if you, if you go back to those numbers and you look at the page two there on the fifteen years, on the purchase price of four twenty-nine, we're looking at a first payment of thirty-seven four. If you wanted to get that down into the thirty thousand dollar range, if I use their numbers and do the math, you would have to commit about thirty-seven thousand dollars of the reserve only to get that down to the thirty thousand dollar payment over fifteen years. And that gets the truck paid off five years before its life expectancy is over. So I, that would be, that would be my recommendation, to get some reserve to get that payment to thirty thousand.
Stu or Steve or Paul, can you provide some comments on the increase from the traditional thirty thousand dollars transfer to the reserve fund to the proposal to go to forty this year?
Yes, sir. That was a conversation that we had probably about a year and a half ago with the board. That forty thousand dollars would include ten thousand dollars to go towards replacing the communications console at the Bennington Fire Facility, which is a backup to the Bennington Police Department console. We had that conversation and Joe, you asked me to work that into the budget. Last year, we, we did not ask for that because we can ask for other things. And this year, we're asking that ten thousand dollars be put in there so that over the next four to five years, we'll be able to upgrade and complete that project at the fire facility.
Okay. Since it's earmarked for a communications project, would it be better to create a communications reserve of ten thousand dollars so that we can account for that ten thousand dollars per year for the backup for the police department? Rather than let it go into a reserve that is uncommitted for equipment?
Well.
And the reason for that, I thought is, that's fifty thousand dollars floating in our reserve fund. We're having conversations like this today, how much, if any, of all, a portion of what amount we commit to purchasing vehicles. We're going to have a, the most substantial vehicle purchase in fiscal year eighteen, as Chief Dusseth just stated. And I can easily foresee a future select board not remembering a conversation on January twelfth, twenty thirteen about what this money is used for and if it's in fact for communications. And I've forgotten about it and you're right, you did talk about that about eight, nine months ago. Then perhaps we ought to have a reserve for communications equipment.
We can do that.
I, I plan to be here. We'll be long in the team.
Paul, that's it, I don't believe you.
Okay, that's, that's great. So that'll be done, is it going to be done for this, that'll be done for this year, but get that?
Yeah, what we'll do, when we do the warning, in order to establish a reserve, the voters have to understand what the reserve is, we include all of the reserve monies in the warning. We'll, we'll break out ten thousand dollars for communications reserve or communications equipment reserve, and the other thirty thousand dollars will go into the equipment reserve.
But this is communications strictly for the fire department or for public safety?
Yes.
It's for part of fire.
Okay, all right. Any other questions on the fire department? Steve, thanks, great work. And Paul, same? Any else you want to wrap up with?
I just want to wrap up while my friend Larry McCloud is here and, and Steve, just kind of want to make sure we're clear, there is a thirty-five hundred dollar increase in building repair. I want to make sure that we're all clear on this. This is the start of a four-year project where we will be sealing the exterior of the fire building. We've had a few issues with some discoloration and some cracks, correct Larry?
Correct.
And we've had some people come down from Daleys, excuse me, Peckham's in Shasbury, take a look at that, and they made some recommendations. And based on their recommendations, we did receive a quote and it was shocking. And Larry feels as though we can do that in four years. So there is that thirty-five hundred dollars in there under forty-five seventy-six eighty. And I just want to make sure that we're all clear on what that money is for.
Any questions on that?
What's the cause of any, of some of that, Larry, do we know?
I just think it's exposure to the environment, age, probably should have been sealed long time ago.
How old's that building?
Hmm. How does that finish in?
I mean, I don't, I don't think that that building is, there's certainly, there's certainly other great buildings in Bennington, Vermont that.
I, I agree with you one hundred percent. And, and when I met with the gentleman from Peckham's, he said that, you know, we, we should seal it on a regular basis. He explained it to me as, just like sealing your deck to protect it. And it was their recommendation and I think to prevent any more cracking or what have you, I, I would go along with that. And again, we need to do it over a few years.
Okay. Any other questions as far as fire? Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
So we understand we're going to have, we, we, I understand we're going to deal with that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll confirm that, that thirty thousand dollar annual payment and what it would take from the reserve. And that'll be on the next slide.
Okay. Now the easy one. Chief, your on?
Why, thank you. Just before we, we get started, we did take an opportunity to speak with Stuart. We did take the opportunity to go through, you all, and Steve and Jason, I know that you referred to this last week with RJ a couple of times, the vehicle replacement plan. So I took the opportunity to go through this and update it myself for the police department. And I guess I would like to just respectfully pass this around so that when we're talking about police department vehicles, we have a very clear understanding of where we're at. I know it's a hot topic and I'd like to stay on the topic of vehicles if you don't mind, Joe. And then drive backwards, Joe. What you are going to see in front of you is in fact, a vehicle replacement plan. The, the plan is current, if you take a look at the police department budget for, as proposed for fiscal year two thousand fourteen, I am, I am proposing that we replace the two two thousand eight, the two two thousand eight Chevrolet Tahoe's. Current mileage, if you go down through and, and took, take, sorry, the two thousand nine Tahos, my mistake. Currently, as of this week, one Tahoe is one hundred and thirty-nine thousand fifty miles, the other one has one hundred and eleven thousand one hundred miles. They are right up there in mileage. Those are V eights, four-wheel drive. I am proposing that we replace them with two all-wheel drive Ford vehicles with three-point-seven liter V six motors to the tune of about twenty-eight thousand dollars apiece. In order to replace the four-wheel drive Chevy Tahoe as they currently exist, instead of being twenty-eight thousand dollars, it would be more around the area of thirty-three thousand dollars. So it's about a five thousand dollar savings going with the Ford instead of the Chevy. Currently, the trend in law enforcement is these Ford interceptors in all-wheel drive. We did purchase a two thousand thirteen Ford Explorer interceptor this year. Currently, it has eight thousand miles on it. Got nothing but good reports from the officers that are currently using that vehicle. At the same time, I did use some money out of our vehicle maintenance and I did buy the extended maintenance plan for the, for the two thousand thirteen Ford that we currently have. And you'll see that where I have proposed that we also purchase the service plan. The service plan is thirteen hundred and twenty-five dollars. And Jason, I know, I'm sorry, Justin, I know you have some knowledge of extended service plans.
Very limited.
This service plan, well, the service plans aren't limited in fact, but anyway, the service plan does include oil changes, tire rotations, and I think when we pay for that upfront, thirteen hundred and twenty-five dollars per vehicle, that, and it will go all the way to a hundred thousand miles, that is, that is a great savings for us over the life of the vehicle. And I think that's, that's an important piece for you all to know. So the vehicles being twenty-eight thousand dollars apiece, then we're looking at consoles, cages, partitions, push bumpers, two decals, and equipment transfer, both vehicles would cost us approximately sixty-six thousand dollars. Again, I would ask that you seriously consider that based on the high mileage that we're seeing on the, on the two Chevys. I went forward and I did a cost analysis of our two Chevy Tahos and what they've cost over the last two years. In routine maintenance on vehicle number four, which is oil change, tire rotation, we've spent fifteen hundred and twenty-seven dollars. On the number three vehicle, we've spent fifteen fifty-three. Very close, as you can see, we do maintain the vehicles. In regular maintenance on number three, we've spent fifty-two hundred dollars. And on number four, we've spent fifty-one hundred dollars. What we're starting to see is we've just had to replace the four-wheel drive encoder motor and transfer case on one of the vehicles, which was eighteen hundred dollars. And on the other vehicle, we, we had to do some stuff with the rack and pinion steering and the ball joints and A frames in the front. So we are starting to see with the high mileage on these vehicles that it is definitely time to replace them. Most agencies are replacing vehicles at eighty thousand miles. I understand that we cannot do that here. We do properly maintain our vehicles and, you know, again, I would ask that we move forward with this and we replace both of these vehicles. This year, I had planned on coming to you with a proposal for three vehicles. We were in desperate need of a new car for our detectives last year. That was cut out of the budget and I was allowed to purchase one vehicle. Not good news, but I, I want to make sure because as Joe says, the, the taxpayers would be watching this. We did unfortunately have two significant motor vehicle crashes in the past year. Neither crash was at fault of the officer driving the vehicle. We had officers get injured, which we'll talk about later. But the bottom line is with those two vehicles both being totaled as a result of being involved in motor vehicle crashes, I was able to work with Stuart and take the money from the two total wrecks that we've had and put that together with the sale of, of another vehicle. And we were actually able to buy a new BCI car as a result of two motor vehicle crashes. Now, I certainly wouldn't at, hope that that happens again, but again, we did save a significant amount of money by taking the insurance money and buying vehicles. So I am not asking for three vehicles as originally planned. I'm asking for the two because we do have that new BCI car. And as you'll see, it's, it's in service, operational and currently has thirty-six-hundred miles on it.
Sorry, Paul, BCI?
Bureau of Criminal Investigation. Our, our three detectives share two cars.
So is that, the new one we have now, is that a two thousand four, the one you're talking about?
Two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, yeah, I got it, the Fusion.
The, it's a two thousand and twelve Fusion, which gets amazing gas mileage, you know, and.
The hybrid?
No, it's not, it's not hybrid. We, we didn't reckon that, ours was. But, but all kidding aside, you know, we were able to take the insurance money, buy the vehicle, and, and I thought that that would please all of you, that we, we were fiscally responsible with that. I thought, you know, it was, you know, Stuart and I worked on this, we were able to work with a local dealer and, and make that happen with the insurance money. So I'm pleased to report that and pleased that I don't have to sit here and ask for three vehicles instead of just the two. It is very important that we replace those, those two Chevy Tahos and I would ask that you consider that. I know you guys are great about being fiscally responsible and trying not to spend too much money on vehicles, but these vehicles definitely need to be replaced.
What's the value for trade in?
We don't typically.
For the direct sale or what?
We are, we are hoping, my other piece on this is, I want to talk about animal control a little bit in a few minutes. I would like to take the Tahoe with the lower miles, peel the police decals off of that and convert that into an animal control vehicle to get our animal control officers out and far more visible, picking up dogs and conducting investigations and writing violations that need to be written. And I think if we are more visible with our animal control, we're, we're going to have far less animal control complaints. So I'm hoping that one of those Tahos we'll take and sell. I'm estimating that we will hopefully get between three and four thousand dollars for the one that we sell and the other one will convert to animal control use. So between three and four thousand dollars, I believe, would be the answer you're looking for.
Anything else, Paul?
Not yet.
The vehicles, okay, questions, Jason?
Chief, a couple, could you provide some comments on if we were going to, the twenty-thirteen Ford Explorer is the interceptor, I think, that you were referring to? The bottom line of the sheet?
Yes, sir.
That's, the Tahos typically we budgeted for four years, the Ford we are budgeting for three, which of course is shorter lifespan. Could you just give some comments on the, the relative savings and the logic behind that?
The logic behind that is originally when we, when Rick and I, Rick Athier and I, the former chief, discussed the purchase of these four-wheel drive Tahos, we were going to try to extend the life. It was, it was, it was a test to see if we could actually get four years of this vehicle. No offense to Chevy, but these Impalas that we're buying, I mean, they're referred to in the, in the police world as throwaway cars. You have them for two years, they're done. So we opted to go with the Tahoe and we've done extremely well with the SUV for a variety of different reasons, which we're all intelligent people and we understand. We went with four years. My concern, Jason, is that, you know, we're, we're up there in mileage. Now, keep in mind, we have to keep these vehicles until probably August or September of this year. I mean, we're, we're going to be on one of these vehicles, we're going to be upwards of a hundred and seventy-five thousand plus miles.
Oh, I understand.
Which is not what we want to do. So my logic in that is to try to keep these vehicles for three years instead of four so that we're not paying out as much on maintenance and, and things of that nature.
Okay. I mean, the, the comment I would make on that is I, I think I recall you saying on car three, one of the Tahos, there was about two thousand dollars in maintenance this year in, or was that just the routine?
Oh, oh, no, sir. On, on car three, in the last, in the last two years, I went back two full calendar years, we spent a grand total of six thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars and sixteen cents.
And that's, what car is that supposed to be for?
Over two years.
The two thousand nine Tahoe?
Yes.
Yes.
Over two years, six thousand five hundred.
Right. But like I said, we, we just had the transfer case issue, which was almost two thousand dollars. And, and I'm just worried that the more mileage that we have on these, because it's not, it's, for us, Jason, it's not the highway mileage, it's the stop and the go and, and the turnarounds and stopping the violators and, I mean, we, we put a lot of wear and tear on these. They sit idle at crash scenes and other types of scenes. So the mileage is one thing, but when you stop and do the, the math, it's, yeah, I mean, it's a lot.
I understand. What I'm just thinking about is if it's sixty-five hundred over two years, it's about thirty-two hundred for a year. You know, is there a way to budget four years out of these Ford cars if they're better cars rather than three is the, what I was getting at?
Well, again, the reason why I, we wanted to try the Ford, if you remember last year, I said Ford's coming out with this interceptor, it's getting some great reviews, it's still getting great reviews. So we, we decided we would try it because it's about a five thousand dollar savings.
Right.
We can't get a two-wheel drive Chevy. We can't get a two-wheel-drive Chevy Tahoe for...
For what you're getting for it.
For what we're getting this all-wheel-drive Ford. So, I mean, it's, it, it makes sense to, to go with the Fords, try them. But my, my fear is I, I don't want to say to you, Jason, this is a four-year vehicle, and then four years from now, you say to me, when I come to you in three years rather than say, boy, this isn't working out, and you're gonna say, geez, chief, you said. I, I don't want that to happen. I want to be upfront.
I promise you, I won't say that to you in four years. I can guarantee it.
Well, in passing, on Union Street.
So why not get one of each? Get a Ford and a Tahoe instead of getting two Tahos, I'm sure.
Have my guys been calling you?
No.
The officers, the officers are not upset at all. They, they love the Chevy Tahoe, the four-wheel-drive Chevy Tahoe, but it is a considerable amount of money, more than, than the Ford. And they like them because they're, they're a little bit bigger. I'm looking at this as, as a manager, as an administrator, saying, look, the engine's small, we're getting better gas mileage with the Ford than we, than we are the Chevy's. No brand, it's new, I understand that. You know, and actually, I, I have, I, I did contemplate bringing to you, this is what it's gonna, we're gonna buy a Chevy and a Ford. But if I was being fiscally responsible, which I'm trying to be, I, I think the, the smart way to go about this is to buy two Ford interceptors because, because of the savings.
Well, the savings is one, but also here you're saying that performance-wise, you're convinced the Ford is performing better than the Tahos.
No.
No?
The, the, the jury's still out on that because this vehicle only has eight thousand miles on it. What I'm saying to you is so far that, for example, that first snowstorm we had, the guys raved about how that Ford handled because it was all-wheel-drive. Pursuit-wise and pickup speed and things like that have, have all been great. We've not had any issues in the first eight thousand miles with this other than just oil changes and one tire rotation.
I guess my question goes back to your comment that some of your officers say they're bigger. Why, why would bigger make a difference if the performance of the vehicle matches what you have now and can do the, do the job?
I think because, Joe, it's, it's been four years, we've been driving these Tahos, and, and the officers have just gotten used to that and they enjoy, they do, they like them, they're higher up off the ground. But again, the officers that are driving the Ford enjoy that as well. And I think for the, for the money, I think we should stay with the Fords.
And what about the, the pursuit issue? You know, when you are, are taking a turn with an SUV, it's different than taking a turn with a sedan, the rollover factor and all that.
The Ford, the Ford interceptor is pursuit-rated. So the Chevy Tahoe four-wheel-drive is not. So that's another interesting fact. Now, the two-wheel-drive Chevy Tahos are literally pursuit vehicles, that's what they're designed for. Or one of the things that they're designed for. But, you know, the, the, the Ford definitely is working right now, and that's, that's why I have proposed to buy those.
Okay. On the, on the purchase new on the Fords, what's the warranty without going out under the standard? What do they come with?
The, it's interesting. The Ford to match Chevy, because Ford was only offering sixty-thousand-mile powertrain.
Okay.
In two thousand and thirteen, Ford said, we, we gotta keep up with Chevy. So now it's a hundred thousand, they're, they're identical.
Okay.
So the warranty, the, 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 the initial purchase warranty is that Chevy and Ford are both the same now.
And what was the extended service plan you were talking about on, for maintenance on the Fords?
The, the extended service plan allows us to go down to the local dealer, have the oil changed, have the tires rotated, every, I believe it's every five thousand miles because we're using a synthetic oil, or that the Fords require synthetic. And we pay for that upfront. We go down, drop the vehicle, go back, pick it up, and, you know, it just, we just sign.
And it shows the savings.
And it, and it, and there is a savings. I mean, we went and compared line by line. The local dealer that we bought the vehicle from actually has offered that, that plan to us at their cost, which I did work with Michelle Johnson and Stuart on that and showed what, what the difference was. And they were kind enough to sell it to us at their cost, so they, they're not making any money.
Sure, but you're not showing that in the sixty-five and forty, correct? That's a separate line item?
No, sir, that's, that's in there.
Oh, that's included in that?
I guess I included that.
Okay.
The other questions? All right, I'm not hearing any, well, listen. Do we need any other information to make a decision on Paul's request on the two thousand, on the replacement of Tahos?
Just a quick question for clarification. The Impalas were a two-year changeover?
The Impalas have always been a, a two-year changeover. And what we would do is we would rotate those out. That would become a car that I would drive to Burlington or Pittsburgh or whatever and go to meetings. And we, we were, we would occasionally rotate one out and, and make it a BCI car or, or what have you. So you'll see on here, we still have a couple of Impalas, one of them where it says TSC. That means traffic safety car. That is, that is equipped with everything that we need to conduct traffic safety. And it's also used as a spare car for people going back and forth to the police academy and things like that, so.
Which is why we've extended the changeovers to two thousand and sixteen.
Correct.
So it doesn't have the use that a normal...
Right, it does not have the use that a normal car has.
And what about the Subaru Outback? I see that there are no plans as of two thousand and eighteen to change that, and there's a hundred and seven thousand miles on that car.
That is the school resource officer vehicle utilized by Officer Pedro. And that car was, was donated to us. We have not paid, we, we didn't pay anything for that. However, we do our maintenance and things like that on that vehicle down at that.
So there's no plan to replace it once?
I, I have no plans to replace that unless Mr. Lyons says, geez, that vehicle's got too many miles, I'm gonna give you this or give you that, because he has created out vehicles with us in the past.
And what about the Subaru Impala, the two thousand and four?
The two thousand and four Chevrolet Impala was due to be replaced. And right now, that only has seventy-seven thousand miles on it. So I, I think that could be extended out. That's not a pursuit vehicle, it's not a vehicle that's used to chase cars and things like that. It's used by our detectives who typically drive relatively slow.
Okay, Chris, Paul, what are we using the Humvee for?
The Humvee is currently being used by our special response team. We recently acquired a trailer, and you'll see that that's added on there. And that can be used to barricades, traffic safety cones, things like that. We, we had that all loaded and prepared, for example, when we prepared for Hurricane Sandy. So that's, that's what that's for. Again, that was donated and it cost us nothing.
Maintenance-wise, we put anything into that?
Diesel fuel, that's, that's about it.
That's about fuel, okay.
Yes, that did come with some spare equipment, which is in storage, came with spare tires and, and things like that. That trailer that we just recently acquired, actually, it was, was brand-new. It still had those little rubber things on its tires and had never been used by the military.
Okay, it was a military trailer?
It was surplus, yes.
All right, any other questions on Paul's request? So what I sense is that part of the budget's fine, okay. Where are you going next, Paul?
Where I would, where I would like to go next is I would like to address overtime with you.
Yep.
At, at this point...
Sure. Okay, I got it.
This has to move for a minute.
Okay. At this point, overtime, I, I just would like to share with you where we're at with that. That number, in overtime, under forty-one-hundred-one-ten, is right now, if you look at the bottom line, which is what you, what you have in front of you, which is about two hundred thousand dollars. One of the things I just want to share with you is that, you know, when we take a look at this and Stuart goes over the, the budget with me and we try to find ways to reduce overtime, we, we're typically running on average about eleven percent, which is, which we total about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The remaining seventy to seventy-one thousand dollars is due to the department being twenty-four-seven through sixty-five and working holidays. When you look at the budget and, and you see that, you know, there's quite a bit of money here for the officers and the dispatchers to work holidays, again, that, that, that accounts for about seventy thousand dollars because we are required to be working unlike most other parts of town government. So I would ask that you just consider that when you, when you look at the overtime because, I mean, we, we need to have the officers working during the holidays. And that eleven percent totaling a hundred and thirty thousand dollars is a result of call-outs, investigations. We've had some issues with short shift, we've had some officers injured, we've had officers retire. And we, we did have an officer actually leave to go to another department up north, and those shifts had to be covered. And the only way to do that by contract is with overtime. So I know that there's been some questions, you know, about the overtime. Some weeks, you know, the overtime is a little bit lower, but on average, it seems like we're averaging about eleven percent. And, and I thought that you deserved an explanation as to that. We are looking at, we have recently hired an officer that will start with us at the end of the month. And we have an officer that will be going to the Spring Academy, hopefully bringing us up to full staff at the, at the police department. I would also mention to all of you that there are, and I know that you see it on the backside, but the people in the community don't always get to see some of the grants that we've applied for. And I want to share with you that not in, that you don't see it in here, but at the same time, we're receiving about fifty thousand dollars a year from, from the state of Vermont to do highway safety enforcement. We also receive, it was forty thousand. This year, I just sent the check over to the town office. We just received a check for fifty thousand dollars for having Detective Silvestro assigned to the Child Advocacy Center. Which, when you look at the police department budget on paper and what we, what the, the town puts out, you don't actually get to see that fifty thousand dollars. On the backside, you do. But, you know, on the front, when you, when you look at the bottom line on my sheets here, you don't actually see that. And then there's additional monies that the town of Bennington is receiving for another position, which I want to hold off on discussing at this point. So there, there is quite a bit of...
Go ahead, Paul.
There, there is quite a bit of money that, that we, we see going out initially, but we don't see coming back in unless you know how to actually look at this and see how it comes in the, the back way. So I just wanted to share that with you, that, that we are, we are receiving funds from the state of Vermont to fund some of the projects that, that we're doing. And that money comes at no cost to the local taxpayers. I mean, it does come out of our state tax money. So I just wanted to share that even when I'm prepared to answer any questions about this.
We know that, this is really a question for Stuart. We know that money's now coming in, why wouldn't we reflect that on incoming funds on page one?
We do.
We do, okay, so we do see that.
Yeah, we do, we, yeah, we do see it in the revenue. If you'll note in the budget last, or current budget...
You're hoping it's provision B.
Yes, it wouldn't, this hasn't changed.
We'll look at page one of the revenue.
Yeah, on the, on the revenue side. If you get about halfway down the page, you have police, special services. That's where those incomes are shown. We have been budgeting a hundred thousand over the last two fiscal years. It was reduced to ninety-five thousand, and I need to, I'm hearing here that we just received ten thousand dollars additional. We may be able to increase that by that ten thousand, so I don't think Melissa was anticipating that additional fund.
No, sir, that, that announcement just came. And, and then shortly after the announcement, the check just literally came this week in the amount of fifty thousand. So that is a ten thousand dollar increase than what you were planning.
So we can, we, we can basically move that to a hundred and five thousand, which of course reduces the amount to be raised by taxes by that ten thousand dollars. That's where that is shown though. All of those special services grants that, that fund overtime, fund officer time are shown in the special services. The miscellaneous fees and false alarm fees, dispatch fees, those are generally... False alarm fees are basically for problematic businesses that don't take care of their alarms. Dispatch fees are contracted, dispatch fees. We have been talking with the Bennington Rescue Squad about potentially increasing our contract with them, but that does not reflect it here because we haven't had that very serious conversation with them yet. So there's an opportunity there also to increase the revenue, which really won't have the impact until May, when you get ready to set the tax rate. We'll have much better numbers for revenue. We give you this as an estimate to give you some impact of, for the budget, what we, what we anticipate. I can also tell you that now that Paul has, has decided to sell one of the vehicles, you'll see three thousand dollars added to the sale of fixed assets down below. We hadn't budgeted any because there was some conversation with Paul about using, reusing that, that second SUV. And we've now decided, just within the last week or so, to sell it. And I haven't told Melissa to make that change, but there'll be some additional revenue there as well.
Paul, going to overtime.
Yes, sir.
And just curiously, I mean, that a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, that's four or five extra police officers that we could have in town. And so my question is...
How do you feel on...
Well, it's a hundred and eighty-five thousand in overtime.
Okay, but pay benefits, uniforms.
Okay, so let's go down to three. And what's the number to add somebody to the Ford?
The, the number to add someone to the police department would probably be somewhere in the area of seventy thousand dollars.
Seventy thousand, okay.
Closer to sixty.
Yeah, but body armor, training, uniforms, I mean, it's a huge chunk. So we'll split the difference, sixty-five thousand. That was, that was my guess.
Continue, continue. So my question is, is it a shortage of men or just extra hours that are needed?
It's, it's, you know, it's, it's at that point where we are, you know, we are handling our, every year, our calls for service go up, without a doubt. This year, our calls for service are up, an additional two hundred-plus incidents. We've made, in fiscal year two thousand and twelve, and the, and the year isn't concluded yet, we made seven hundred and sixty-six arrests for nine hundred and forty-four different offenses. You know, the overtime is, you know...
I'm sorry, back up. What was the, the timeframe and that number of arrests?
In fiscal, in, 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 in the calendar year two thousand and twelve, we made seven hundred and sixty-six arrests for nine hundred and forty-four different offenses. You know, we've, we've issued almost twenty-two hundred traffic tickets. I mean, and what happens is, the reason I bring that up to you is because, you know, this overtime accounts for report writing, it, it accounts for investigations, court call-outs. I mean, you know, there's a lot of different things that attribute to this. So by simply saying that if we put more people on, we're gonna have less overtime, I honestly don't think that's the case because we're still gonna have to pay the officers for their, their court and for the investigations and things like that. And I, and I think that we have struggled since nineteen ninety-nine to maintain full staffing levels with people retiring or people leaving and going to other, other placements. And I don't want to jinx myself, but I, I'm, I'm thinking that this, this year, two thousand and thirteen, is gonna be a wonderful year for the Bennington Police Department. And I think that we're hopefully gonna get ourselves back up to full staff minus the frozen position that we have. And if we can prevent injuries or illness, which is not always the case, you know, we would have a wonderful year. Because what happens is when, when we lose someone off of a shift, you know, we're pretty much covered with overtime because people are still entitled to their vacation time and their personal days and things like that. The evening shift, for example, Jim knows guys, the officers on the evening shift, I mean, they're busy from four o'clock until midnight. I mean, if you, you've all seen and listened to her, I mean, that shift should be staffed with a minimum of four people, not three. And, you know, we're, we're working towards that goal. You know, if, if we get this next person in through the academy, you know, we're, we're probably looking at July. If we don't lose anybody between now and July, we'll probably be able to make that happen with four people on the evening shift.
How long have we been down the street, Paul, this year?
Well, it's been a long time. I mean, between people coming and going...
Because of turnovers.
Because of turnover, yeah, I mean, it's in, in injuries, I mean, you know, this is a question, as you all know, I mean, we have, we have people that get hurt on a, on a regular basis. I mean, people intentionally do whatever and hurt the police or slips, trips, and falls as big. So it's not a huge struggle. No, it's not. And it's, it's one of those things where we are, I'm telling you, I'm very excited, and you can probably see it. I'm very excited about two thousand and thirteen, that I've been working with Stuart and Michelle to, to make this happen. And, you know, we've, we've got out, we've, we've gone to different colleges, we've done recruitment. We're, we're hiring people that are local, which is very pleasing to all of us. And, and it's, and it's really starting to come together, Jason.
Just, I'm looking for some comments on what is the, the largest line item in the largest section of our budget. And that, of course, is the salaries and wages on forty-one-hundred dot one hundred. Just historically, it was in fiscal eleven, one point five two eight million. In fiscal twelve, it was just under one point six million. Budget for this fiscal year is one point, I'd say... Budget for this fiscal year is one point, let's say five million and we go to one point seven four million for proposed FY14 budget. And, and as you stated, I know, given the pay scale within your department, and perhaps this is the answer, I, you know, it's, it's really set, but there have been senior officers leaving, junior officers coming in. They should be employed at a lower cost, is that-
That is happening. We now, with our contract for the past several years, we've been, we've embarked on using a step system. There are six different steps to the step system. So someone coming on, for example, and going to the academy, like the individual that we have going up for the polygraph this week, he'll go to the academy at step one. When he finishes the academy, he goes to two. After a year, he goes to three. And then every year after that, he increases a step. So we have taken that into consideration. When I started twenty-three years ago, Jason, Eddie Coy and Paul Toussaint were making the same amount of money.
The good old days.
The good old days. And, and everybody made the same amount of money. We don't do that anymore. You know, there, there is, we have, we've incorporated that into the union contract. You're gonna see increases in, in the budget because a couple of years back, we were only running one dispatcher. We run two dispatchers on the evening shift and the day shift now because of the call volume. Seven thousand calls a year for Bennington Rescue, almost ten thousand calls a year for the Bennington Police Department, not to mention the fire calls. We have to run two dispatchers, there's a reason for an increase. You're also seeing a small increase in this year's budget because as you all know, I've incorporated the animal control budget into the police department budget. So you're gonna see an increase in investigations, you're gonna see an increase in salaries because we're paying those people. Two years ago, I started incorporating a small amount of money for our part-time officers because we never accounted for the part-time officers' work that was never incorporated into this. So I'm trying to present a well-rounded budget as far as salaries go to show you where the money actually goes. So yes, there have been some increases.
Okay, the point being, you've given, obviously, we've seen step increases or annual increases as a result of union contracts several times over the last few years when it's-
Yes, sir.
When it's been part of the contract. But, you know, with it very public knowledge that senior officers up on step six or higher-ranked officers may be retiring, junior officers coming in on a lower step, it's a question that, that I think is fairly raised by several people because it is, I, I, well, without looking at it, I think that line item is the biggest line item in the entire town of Bennington. I, I, I don't know what could be bigger without my, my second.
I can share with you also, just briefly, what I, what I do with the budget for Stuart. I break down how many patrol officers we have at step six, how many patrol officers we have at five, so on and so forth. And I, and I break all of that down and present it that way. And that's the money that we plan on. I don't just say, hey, everybody makes twenty dollars an hour and here's my budget. I mean, I, I physically take the time to go through all of this and break it down and, and present it. And, you know, it's, it's, I, I mean, it's very well, I shouldn't say this. It's very well done in the sense that you, you, all the numbers are broken down into the, into the columns here.
We can't, and, and we don't anticipate people leaving us and we don't anticipate retirements, even though the officers can retire at age fifty-five. We, we're carrying some officers that are older than that now that have not yet made that commitment to, to retirement. So it's, it's hard when building a budget to anticipate that they'll leave during the year.
I'm just looking retrospectively, seeing constant increases when we've probably had. Well, let me ask you this, Paul, would it be fair to make this assumption that within what we would traditionally call the police department, those labor costs have actually decreased? But when you put in the extra dispatch, the extra call, the animal control, and you mentioned a fourth, I just can't recall what you mentioned, that's where the increase comes in?
Yes.
That's, thank you.
More increased workforce than increased expense.
That is correct.
There's more being, there's more being captured in that line item.
Yes, and there's far more work being done. Has the reason for the staff.
The question, that leads me to the dispatchers because we do receive revenue from agencies that we support in dispatching. If we looked at, and I guess we are gonna be negotiating with people like the Rescue Squad and things coming up, if we look at, are we, are we charging them a fee that is appropriate to the amount of work we're performing for them?
We are not.
Well, we are now?
We are not.
Okay, we are not?
We are not.
Okay.
However-
Why are they?
Stuart and I have been working on this and it's, I'll be straight up with all, it's in my evaluation and I need to work a little more closely with the Bennington Rescue Squad. I started doing that. Unfortunately, shortly after starting that conversation with Bennington Rescue, Mr. Hathaway is no longer the executive director there. I have been in contact with the interim director. He knows my position on this. He knows that they're gonna have to start, they're gonna see an increase. What they've asked is that we hold off, their, their budget goes calendar year, and they've asked that we take a, a look at this over this, this calendar year and give them some numbers that they can put into their next budget. So the answer is yes, we are working on that.
I mean, my feeling is, I mean, we're, I'm not trying to say those or other people we support, you know, should pick up our, our share, but they should do their fair share based on the volume and what we've got to add.
Right, and, and, and I agree with you a hundred percent and I, and I firmly believe that Bennington Rescue is, is on track. I've, I've had a conversation recently with the chairman of their board. He understands also that they need to, that they need to pay more money. Again, they're averaging seven thousand calls a year for service. And, you know, they're, they're paying us one thousand dollars a month. This is just an example, Joe. I mean, so, I mean, that's twelve thousand dollars a year for, for what we're doing for them is, is not enough money. So we are working on that. Stuart and I have had some conversations about that and he's left that up to me and that is a project that I'm working on.
Good, good.
Do we dispatch for sheriff's department too? Do we get money from them?
We have an arrangement with the sheriff's department. You will see in the budget, we pay an exorbitant amount of money for transports. We would be paying far more money than that. We do get a fifty percent discount from the Bennington County Sheriff's Department, which I'm not sure I was supposed to disclose, but we do get that. And, you know, the, the issue is, is that, you know, they, 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 they give us a discount and we provide dispatch services for them. Basically, what they would consider after hours, when they put their DUI patrol out, when they have their patrols, we do in fact dispatch for them. I will tell you that the sheriff has been diligent in installing mobile data terminals in most of his police cars. So a lot of their dispatch can be done through their mobile data terminals. And we can, we monitor them, we know where they're at, we wanna make sure that they're safe. But they do a lot with their mobile data terminals too. And really, they're not really a burden for us and, and based on what we get in exchange, we do send a lot of people to Marble Valley Correctional Facility and Woodside and other places. So we, we, I think we are getting a fair deal from the sheriff.
Any questions? Paul, have you wrapped that or do you have something else you wanna discuss?
I wanna just share with all of you, just a couple more things, I promise it will be brief. I wanna thank you for allowing us to use funds for our new experience camp. As you all know, that was a huge success and I am asking for that money again this year. So that, that is in there, there is no increase. I wanna just make sure that you all understand that under purchase services, there is a large increase in purchase services, which is forty-one-ten-five-sixty, which is due to, again, absorbing animal control. That is the kennel fees and animal control service disposal fee when we unfortunately do have to euthanize animals. The other piece, just quickly that I, I wanna share with you is, I am asking that you please consider, I did ask that the original amount be placed back in my training line. Training a staff of thirty-plus people with three thousand dollars is, is not funny. And, and we had some conversations here, you guys were all great about if we did receive money as a result of our efforts during Irene from the federal government, we could put some money back into training. I've not seen any money go back into training, but I also haven't really seen any money come from the federal government. So, you know, I am asking that you please consider that and increase that line and leave it where it's at in, in my proposed budget for, for this year. And in, in exchange for that, I will bring your attention to forty-one- forty-two-thirty, where we have decreased that line on the police communications by almost five thousand dollars because we had our three-year program where we replaced portable radios, eat portable radios per year for a total of twenty-four portable radios. That project is now complete and so there, there is that five thousand dollars which, which would be available. In closing, I, I will tell you that I work with a great group of people for, over at the police department. They are, they're awesome. We are doing a lot of work. I've already told you what our arrest rates are, the, the volume of calls that we're handling, the tickets that we're generating. They work extremely hard to achieve results. And I don't wanna get into too many details. I promised all of you two years ago when I took this position, there were issues in this community that needed to be worked on. And we've been working diligently and you will see the results of our work probably within the next fourteen days. And that work will continue, but I don't wanna get into all the details.
Okay, my only question is, during this past year, we've asked you to increase the drug enforcement piece. Have you figured that into your dollars for your training to make sure your officers are totally trained on that piece?
This piece here, with asking for the increase in training, does include drug enforcement training and it does also include, unfortunately, actor shooter response training, not actor, excuse me, active shooter response training. So that is incorporated into the additional funds that I've asked for.
Any questions with Chief?
Just one question in the final number, the, the final five point four three percent increase that has been increased over last year, correct? And that includes your department taking over the animal control budget?
That is correct.
Okay.
Jason?
Go ahead, Jason.
Following up on what Joe said, the, the question I had for you because it's been probably the most visible thing over your chiefship has been drug enforcement and what, you know, appears to be just at least to the naked eye, you know, an increase in that illegal activity in town. And my question to you is, is on line forty-one-ten-dot-two-thirteen, which is the, exactly in the middle of page six of revision B, where you leave it at thirty-five hundred dollars for drug investigations. I run collection from past budget meetings, both with yourself and with Chief Goffier, is that that is money that can be used to, I'm sure it's an overstatement to say a little bit can go a long way, but it goes a long way to infiltration, it goes a long way to curtailing and adding to your visibility in investigating. Given that we've got, going back to the conversation on the automobiles, where we have an additional thirteen thousand dollars in revenue to come back in to lower the tax rate as a result of what we discussed at the beginning of the chief's presentation. Chief, do you have any comments on what an increase on that line item could yield for, if we were to take some of that thirteen thousand, insert that back in, in that particular area? I'm sure any money helps, but any comments? Or, or, or if it's an inappropriate kind of kind of whole?
It's really inappropriate at this point. I would like to, I would love to come back and visit with all of you in a couple of weeks. And I know we don't have a couple of weeks to do this, but I would, I would love an opportunity to come back and talk to you about some of our efforts that, that we're, that we are seeing. We do, we do have a drug problem here.
There's no question about that.
We have the start of a gang problem here. I have meetings next week in Rutland with different chiefs around, not all the chiefs, with different chiefs around the state that are having the same issues that we are here. Jim Baker and a few others. And we've, there, there are about, I have five chiefs that are gonna get together and meet. We're gonna discuss some of the things that we've been successful with and, and some of the things that we're currently working on. Could we see an increase in that line? Yes, but I'd like to come back and talk to all of you in a couple of weeks.
Let's, let's do this, I think, because I think it's important we brought it up before in the course of the year. We all recognize, you know, we, we have a perceived problem anyway that it's on the increase. Let's give Paul time to put a briefing together solely on this for the board. We can do that in executive session as far as-
If it involves ongoing investigations, yes.
And let's, let's have a comprehensive one because I think it's important enough, this area. My personal feeling and just one anecdote, I mean, I, I just see a switching from a problem, I thought when we first got on the board, it was more the callouts for domestic disturbances and things of that sort versus now the drug investigations enforcement here. And I, I just think it's important, we all know, give guidance to the chief as far as direction we'd wanna see the, the focus on.
Yeah, I mean, the numbers I'm looking at here added thirty-two hundred dollars, fifty dollars for training, thirty-five hundred dollars for investigation, these are not big numbers. These are, this is a big problem and, and, and training is a big part. I mean, this, the technology on this stuff and the information is key in, in getting this. When I, I was in Troy, I had a car break-in in Troy a few months ago and I went over to the police department and, and the officer in charge was going on and on about his experiences of coming out to Bennington and the task force and stuff. So this has been going on. This is, you know, it's years ago when he was, you know, on, on the street and he knew everybody in Bennington from years, getting in on Chief Goffier and stuff. There was a lot of good things to say, but it gives you an idea of the scope of, of the work that has to be done. And the petty break-ins, the constant burglaries, things like that that go on around here directly related to that. So it's not just a matter of kids in an alley, somebody up in the park. It's a matter of what's going on day to day with car thefts. I mean, I, you know, I see things that we just never saw, you know, around, around town before, so.
Sure, Paul's ready, just get that on our agenda as one of our items and we'll do that. Paul, take, take your time and do it well. I mean, yeah, we wanna know, but let's get all the information you can get for us, okay?
Yes, sir.
Joe, I, I just have a quick question, again, for, for clarification. On page six of seventeen on revision B, it doesn't have an impact on the budget, but I, I just need to know, the actual expense for police special services is ninety-two thousand, six hundred and thirty. The budget for two thousand twelve is thirty-one thousand, the actual is sixty-five thousand, which is pretty much doubled. And then I need to, to have some clarity on those numbers. It just seems like we're, we're, we're spending more than what was budgeted in.
We, we, we haven't changed those numbers over the last, I'd say, almost a decade because it, it, because it is a wash. If we were to increase this on the expenditure side, it, it makes the budget look like it's more than it needs to be. And, and it's only those that would know what the revenues are that would see the, the wash. So years ago, back when Chief Goffier was here, he and I decided to just leave that at thirty-one thousand. We'll show the expenditure as we have been doing, but we'll also balance that with the revenue that you see on the other side. And it, it, it just, otherwise you're, you're, you're raising the expenditure side of the budget essentially and giving people the misimpression that you're increasing your budget cost when you've actually offset it with revenue.
So if, if I may, just quickly, that was, that was a great explanation, but I wanna do it this way so people out there can understand. You at the Bennington Banner hire a Bennington police officer to go work a customer at the high school and you receive a bill for thirty-six dollars, the officer makes his money, that offsets. So it's all reimbursed, it's what we call the forty-one-twenty rate of pay and that money comes back. And actually, quite honestly, Stuart and I discussed last year about removing that to, so it didn't show that my budget had that thirty-one thousand dollars in it because really, it's there, but it's not because we, that's not money that I'm spending because we get it all back. Plus, and the reason why you see that overage is some years we have a lot of details at the high school or when J. A. McDonald was doing their construction work, wow, that number was really inflated and it looked like I went way over budget and I was worried about that. And I said to Stu, but it's all reimbursable, so that money is there just so that we have it because we pay the officers upfront, then we send out the bills and Joanie collects the money and we get it back.
I assume that's what it was since there was no impact on the budget, but the numbers just looked funny to me.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you for that.
I mean, theoretically, Chris, if, 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 if at one point you wanted to make that leap, you could actually reduce the budget by thirty-one thousand, thirty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars and, and not worry about overspending. It's a, it's a paper, truly a paper number.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Just off of what he just said, when you talked about traffic control and stuff like that, it was fully reimbursable. Is that something where somebody's coming in for overtime and they're being reimbursed on that rate? Or it's not a situation probably where you're pulling an officer off some other duty? Or how does that procedure sort of work?
All right, let me back up. We are one of the few departments in the state of Vermont who don't pay our officers that full overtime rate. The reason why we, is, again, from my good friend Chad Schmidt, the sheriff, we try to stay comparable with the sheriff's department so that the officers do have that ability to work with the extra assignments. So we give them a flat rate of pay, again, referred to as the forty-one-twenty detail rate. That is, basically, it's not an overtime job, but it's an extra pay job is what we refer to as. So we're not pulling, we don't send an officer off ship to go help J. A. McDonald or that's- So, we're not pulling, we don't send an officer off ship to go help J. McDonald, or that's, that doesn't happen.
So, you just, you need somebody that's willing to come in and to come in.
We might, I mean, we might, like, if the town of Bennington, if RJ were to call me and say, and this does not happen reoff, hey, we're going to pull a hydrant, or actually Terry would call me on that, but we're going to do this. Could you send an officer over for 30 minutes? Yes. Maharis has a funeral coming through, a big one, and they need us for 20 minutes. We do all of that. We don't charge them for that. But the big jobs, the officers do get paid.
And we, we have a sign-up sheet, Justin, that goes up every week when we know the events, basketball games, football games. And the officers that have the time sign up for those events and take them.
I was just curious, another procedure to work on, though. Thank you.
Great.
What we're going to do right now, it's, it's 9:30. Like, a break for 15 minutes, a stretch. Stuart, what I'd like, when we come back, is just think about last Saturday's meeting, this Saturday meeting. Give us a recap of where you think we are now in the process and what, we got to come back, and then we'll get into all others, which, which you have there, okay?
Okay.
So, everybody just take a stretch, and let's be back at quarter till. What I've asked Stuart here is just to take and give us a quick thing, and I'm kind of worried he thinks we are right now in this budget process. And then we're going to go. I, I would like to, without objections, if we get through this, is we'll cut off in about an hour from now. Some people excited, some people need to get out of here. Stuart, on the salary thing, I think, other than you just telling us what's here, I think we're going to hold off on that till the next meeting, too, as far as, obviously, decisions, sure, we go there, okay?
That's fine. We, we, what we'll do is include an executive session in the next meeting agenda, so that you can do that.
Great. So, why don't you tell us where you think we are in the process right now?
All right. Well, as of today, we've got total reductions from the original budget of $125,700. We have increased the revenue $13,000 because of the actions taken today. And we are creating a fire communications reserve and taking $10,000 out of the fire equipment reserve. And that will show up in a line under communications. We'll create a new line there, so you'll see the $10,000 there and the $30,000 in the equipment reserve. And that's, those are the main things that we have done today.
And for, and what do we have left to do now between include the all others and the other...
We don't have any other budgets to talk about. We've completed all the general fund budgets last week. Unless you've got questions about specific budgets, I don't have anything else to tell you. What's left to do is interview the two libraries, determine the salaries of three elected or appointed individuals that you control, and finish up. I will be back to you next week to confirm that we can commit a relatively small amount of reserve on the fire equipment purchase to get that, that annual budget number to around $30,000. And it appears that that would be a relatively small commitment of reserve there, so that we don't touch the reserve in the manner that I originally showed here.
So, your initial projection on the increase in this year's budget, remind me where it was?
It was up almost 5%, a little over 5%, I think initially, 5.26% impact on the tax rate. The budget itself has been in the 3%, 3.5% range total. Those are the expenditure sides. The revenue sides, however, on the highway fund, they, they work to our benefit because we're looking at an increase in grant funds and grant-funded projects. So, the highway, the impact on the highway tax rate is going to be in the range of 1.5%, 1.7%. We're still looking right now, given the revenue changes here today, we're probably still in the range of 4.0, I'm going to say 4.7% of an impact on the, on the general fund tax rate, which is about, overall, about 3 cents combined.
All right, let me go around the table and just ask, do you have any questions, Stuart? Let me start, Jimmy. Great. Chris?
Pertaining to the budget?
Yeah.
My only comment would be, since we have the time today, would be to have an executive session today to talk about salaries and the contract issue while we have the time and the board here to.
Okay.
Nope, that's fine.
Okay. Other than what we plan on going to executive session, other business, I just, I just tell you all, I will not be at Monday's meeting and sharing with the board. If you look at your agenda, I don't see anything real hot that I feel comfortable about. There's one issue, one thought, that's Stuart about the personnel issue executive, but other than that, I'm looking at it. So, other business, other, is that related to the budget?
Monday, I'm going to be hopefully presenting a proposal from a local company who approached the DDC about organizing and managing and funding a summer concert series.
Great.
So, I'll hopefully have a handout, whatever you look at, proposals, bios, all that kind of thing.
Okay. Chris?
Well, actually, in the interest of including things on the ballot as items to go on, in the, the time that I've been on the board, I don't think that this has ever actually been a formal act as far as the board goes. There's been a lot of discussion about it. And because we were, we were talking about the fire department budget and the lack of volunteers, the equipment and so on and so forth, I would like to see us put an advisory article on the ballot, seeing where the, the community stands when it comes to consolidating the rural and the village fire department.
Do you remember? Okay, I, I understand we've had this discussion. I'll give you my personal feelings, that my... I'm not sure I am, talking about me now, can get up to speed about the pluses and minuses between now and the questions we're going to get and put that on the ballot, okay? I think I agree at some point in time, I'd like to see that done, but that's just me. How does other people feel? Jason?
Ditto to what you said, and I would say this. I don't think, I know it's a popular question to ask, I don't think it's something that ought to be on the March ballot. I think that's something that the rural fire department have to come. You know, I look at it in terms of, forgetting how we got here, we have a village fire department operated by the town and its volunteers, and we have a rural fire department operated by its volunteers, which is its own government, really. It's an entity onto itself. And without having a really good grasp about the population in each, how that vote could be skewed, how that vote could be then misinterpreted, let us not forget, you would have the North Bennington District voting in something that doesn't really affect them, but certainly their votes, they have their own fire department, and they would be voting on this question. I just think it's, I, I wouldn't support that for all, for your reasons, for the reasons I've stated. I think it's, it's, not that it's not an important issue, but it's not the way.
Yeah, I mean, I want to get into detail analysis of cost savings of taxpayers because of, 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 maybe we don't need as much equipment if we combine the two versus, you know, what does it, what impact does it have on our insurance? What impact it has on a lot of things, Jason?
And I add one more thing to that. I think by doing it that way with an advisory question, you are forcing in a somewhat antagonistic way two departments to have an opinion foisted upon them both that, you know, if the rural folks are dissatisfied, then the rural folks can certainly vote their budget down.
Sure.
And, you know, in a sense, you know, the, the fire budget for Bennington is such that it's a small part of a much larger budget, it could certainly get more scrupie, and people could stand up and holler and vote that down over time. But that has not happened.
Right. Well, you know, Chris, let me just say, it is absolutely an important issue this time, what you're suggesting, okay? And I'm not arguing at all, it's just the timing of this thing, because if we ask it now, people are going to, are going to vote on their motion rather than facts. And I don't think I have time, or we have time, or the town staff has time, or the both fire departments have time to sit out there and lay out the facts. And it's something I think that, I think maybe in the upcoming board, the next coming year, that the board ought to look at it, and, and if we feel serious enough to do it, then we start early on in the year to get that information together, to get it out there. But I, I see public hearings, I see a bunch of other things that should really take place before we ask the voters to vote on it.
Well, like I said, it would be an advisory vote.
Right, I understand.
Just to kind of gauge, you know, the temperature of, of the community. We wouldn't be acting on anything. It would be an opportunity for us to, to take a look at, you know, I, I know that we've all had discussions with, with people about this, with the fire department, and this has been going on for years. But I feel like, you know, having it on the vote, or having it on the ballot, rather, would engage the, the conversation.
It starts the conversation.
You know, if it fails miserably, then it, obviously, it's not an issue, but if it's...
Can I, can I just stop in a, what you said, and Chris, I think it's a very worthwhile question. I don't even, my issue is, I don't even know how, I don't think I would vote on that right now, because I don't know what the outcomes would be. But I would hate to see something fail miserably if it's a good idea, because people don't understand the issue. And I think that's, that could be kind of where we're at right now, because it may very well be a good idea. I just, I don't have enough information, even as a, as a voter. I'm, I'm thinking about going into the, into the ballot booth on March, you know, March, and saying, well, how, how do I vote on this? And I don't know whether I would say yes or no, because I don't think I have the resources to make that decision at this time. That being said, I think it's a very, very worthwhile question that could potentially save this community a lot of money.
Chris, something else you want to add?
I was just going to say, you know, sort of, a different, but sort of what Justin was just saying. It's clearly important. You're right, Joe, there should be, there shouldn't be one public hearing. If that's a question the next select board wants to consider, there probably ought to be three or four. They ought to be separate meetings. They ought to be much the way we did on certain planning issues over the last several years. They are their own agenda, they stand on their own, they're public, and the important people are there. I, I, this may be as much, you know, like I said, I'll use me as an example. I live in North Bennington. I really don't have a dog in that fight, but I've got a vote on it.
Sure.
That counts, that goes to an advisory question, that's going to be perceived by 15 different people, 15 different ways in terms of how important that advisory ballot is. It might be a great idea and fail miserably, and a lot of people will point that and say, hey, you already had an advisory question. What do you, why are you bringing up? It might soar through resoundingly, but in fact, by many people who, bolstered by people who, like I, wouldn't really have a dog in the fight at that time. I, I think advisory questions by their nature, unless they're a well-vetted issue, end up being, they, they've got the potential to do more harm than good.
Greg, how do you feel about it?
I, I think it falls under one of the, the things that's actually our responsibility to research and, and make a recommendation on rather than an advisory. Whether or not it's something the town should pursue is a, is a pretty serious question. I think that falls under responsibility of legislative body, not throwing it out to an advisory question. I mean, you know, people ask us to come here and research the information and talk to the people, and as a result of that, make a recommendation on how the town should go forward.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I have no problem with that.
I think it's a good one.
I think it, it, it will be addressed, because I don't think, as a board, we've actually, you know, been serious about this discussion, so.
Well, we can, I mean, we could always get the ball rolling and getting together some of that information. I'm, 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 for one, I'd be absolutely interested in, in learning some of the...
It's not a priority, it hasn't been a priority for us. And I guess the reason why I, I asked the board today is because I wanted to just see whether or not it was a priority to the, the community.
Joe, I think, I think it's been a really touchy subject for a long time. A lot of people have talked about it. You know, it's just, it's just something that's been out there, and I don't think rural fire department really wants to deal with it. I think they're afraid of losing their own little identity as a lot of other organizations or, you know, committees or whatever are here in town. I almost think it's up to the rural department to say, you know, maybe, or the two fire departments, actually, to get together and start the conversation. You know, maybe with our recommendation that that's what we want them to do, but it's, it's just a really touchy subject, I think, for a lot of people.
I would have to agree with you at this point, I think, you know, unless we, we need to gather more information and really be very thoughtful about it before we make it up to an advisory.
Well, I think where, where we are, Chris, is we know that, based on your letter, you're not writing, we're going to have one new member on next year's board, whether I'm chair or just a member, I still have time. I'll make sure it's brought up at the beginning of the next thing for us to decide, how do we do it? Do we start with, bring the two fire departments in and say, you guys do your thing? Or, like you've said, it's our responsibility, we'll decide as a board then. I'll, I'll make a motion when we decide as a board then, we'll give guidance out to the manager to get the ball rolling. But you're right, public meetings, the North Bennington thing, I mean, I, I look at the three votes they've had at the school thing, questions are asked back, and they're, you know, why, why, why? I don't think we want to get into that. I think we want to make sure we get the facts and figures, we go to the voters. And I believe it's our responsibility.
And they're volunteers.
They're volunteers.
The other comment, too, is, is, as it's so meant, I think the only people that can collapse the Bennington Rural Fire District is the rural fire district. It's not a town question to be, you know, really baseline about it. That's the first, if they don't want to do it, it's, it's almost a...
Yeah, we can research and recommend it, and if they say, no way, we're not going to do this, it's...
So, knowing that I'll be here next thing, I'll make sure that first one, first orders of business in the next session is we can decide on our calendars, the board decide how we're going to do it. But you're right, it needs to, it needs to be, it's time to do that for a lot of reasons.
Sure, I, I would really appreciate that, and, and that's one of my regrets. You know, I should have brought this up years ago. And like Sharon said, it was a touchy subject, and I think a lot of people were afraid, basically, to bring it to the table to have that discussion.
Right.
And with me leaving, like, I, I almost feel a little bit more comfortable bringing it up.
Oh, sure, Chris.
With that said, you know, I, that's, I, I really appreciate going, going forward with that.
Jason, do you have anything else other business, other what we're going to discuss?
I was just going to say, you mentioned you had a personnel issue. You might want to add that to the executive session we're going to have.
You got anyone?
No, I don't.
Okay, then I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
I move we go into executive session for purposes of salaries, personnel.
And contracts.
And contracts.
A second?
Okay. Have a motion, any discussion? Discussion?
Oh, no, no.
On the fair? Thank you, folks. Appreciate all our work, every way to hear.